Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council meeting for February 26, 2020 to order. The time is now 7:01. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under opening ceremonies, item C is our roll call of council members. I'll ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Brocksmith.
Here.
Councilmember Carrius.
Is excused this evening.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Holtz.
Here.
Councilmember Moberg.
She's also excused this evening.
Councilmember Molinar.
Here.
All right, thank you. Under our consent agenda, we have three items, item A, B, and C.
I'd move the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mark and a second by Gary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion, Gary. Thank you. Under reports tonight, first up is a committee report from Finance and Parks and Enrichment Services Committee, and that's Councilmember Mark Holes.
Good evening. The Finance and Parks and Enrichment Services Committee meeting was held at 6 o'clock. All the council members that are here this evening were also present at that meeting. Our first order of business this evening was kind of an overview of what a private-public partnership looks like. Kevin Roderson, our city attorney, gave us an overview of good examples and bad examples, kind of from a 1,500-foot level. Really, he showed us the good, the bad, and the ugly. There's been some real ugly projects that have taken place in the past. There's been some really good private-public partnerships that have transpired. The biggest thing that Kevin enforced with us or reiterated with us is the public participation, public involvement. Just because you have a developer that wants to come in and do a development, the city thinks that it looks good. Involving the public in that process is very important. As a lot of folks know, we're looking at doing some redevelopment in the downtown corridor. The flood wall's completed. The original plan was to put some retail space down there along with some residential. Council's probably going to take a look at that and review that. Those plans were put in place in 2018. It's been almost 12 years, and I think we'll be seeking some public input on what's the public want to see done with that space. So kind of stay tuned on that, on what we're going to be looking at doing in the future in that downtown corridor, see if what we planned out 12 years ago still works today. We then moved into the Parks and Enrichment Services. Bill King, our soon-to-be-retired Parks Director, gave us an overview of kind of what's going on there. They've got a lot of tree planting going on at Little Mountain, both in the parking area and in the trail area. A lot of damage took place during the storms and things, and they're cleaning that up, replanting some of the trees that need to be replanted. A lot of folks know that we've had a disease problem with some of the trees up there. Those trees are going to be removed and replanted with things that are a little more resistant to the disease that we're experiencing. So there's a lot of trail work's continuing. We got some restroom improvements going on up Hillcrest Park. Unfortunately, we had some folks in there that, over the winter time, went in and did some destructive deeds in there, and the Parks Department crew is in there working to get those all brightened up and ready for spring and summer. And you're going to see some street tree planting going on. The city has a, what do they call it? Tree Street or Street Tree Program, and there's a number of trees that are scheduled to be replaced. You can see some of that work going on currently. There's a number of programs going to be starting up this spring and summer. If you want to see what's going on as far as kids' programs and programs for adults, you can go to the website, and the Parks Department has those all listed out. We then did a kind of a review of some of what's going on with our Finance Department. First off, the 2020 budget is online now, so if you want to access the 2020 budget, you can go to the city website. Everything's up on the website there. And we kind of reviewed where our debt is. Our total government debt for the city of Mount Vernon is $530,000. It's very, very low debt. Part of that is the Riverside Bridge going from Burlington to Mount Vernon, or from Mount Vernon to Burlington. That is paid off in 2021. And then we have a small loan, I think it's about $300,000, for a loan that we took out on the flood wall, or to finish that flood wall project, and that'll be paid, I believe, in 2020. There's no general obligation debt at all. The city has capacity to go to about $96 million in overall obligation, general obligation bonds. Currently, we have no debt there. Our total city debt, including our wastewater treatment plant and everything, is about $17.6 million. Then we did a little bit of a review on where our utility, what our utility rates are and what those revenues are. And when you think about utility rates, we're talking about the rates on water, electricity, phones, those items. And we can see where electricity, phones, and gas continue every year to go down. But when we look at comparables with other cities, we're right in line with what their rates are. And with that, we adjourned about 6:50.
All right, thank you. We're going to postpone our Development Services Committee to our next scheduled council meeting. So next up is item B, our community comments time. If you're here to speak on the open record public hearing regarding CDBG, I'll ask you to wait for that particular agenda item. But other than that, if you'd like to make a comment, you're welcome to step to the podium at this time. Please state your name and city of residence, and the comments around three minutes or so. If there's anyone wishing to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Ellen Gamsen. I'm with the Mount Vernon Downtown Association. I'm just here briefly to speak to you with regard to some issues we were all, you were all working very diligently on last week in your committee meeting. I want to commend you for the long and laborious evening that you spent looking at those issues that are very important to downtown, both plans for improvements or replacement of Fire Station One and the Library Commons Project and the parking structure that has been in the works for a number of, couple of years. Just want to urge you to move with brisk alacrity in the area of the parking situation in the downtown. We need solutions that will help us in the very near future as well as in the long term. And so I wanted to take a very comprehensive look at the parking situation. I'm eager to see this parking structure move into the next level, phase of development. But we're currently facing some issues right now, and we have a number of buildings that aren't even yet occupied, businesses that are coming online over the next, actually the next quarter. They're going to drive even more traffic and parking needs downtown, so we really would encourage you to move with brisk efficiency in that area. And just like to say, just, I know, when it comes to funding, capital improvements, that's hard work. It's really hard work. I encourage you to do the right thing, even when it's hard. Thank you.
All right. Any other community comments tonight? All right. Oh, go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name's Rich Coleman. I'm homeless. I'm here to state or be a voice to some of the issues or concerns regarding the homelessness and the impact off of Kincaid and the parking structure, where myself, along with multiple others, were told was a safe, no-hassle zone to park our vehicles. I was actually advised to go there by a Mount Vernon Police Department officer in late August, that this was something that was proposed, and it was, I guess, okayed or voted upon through the city, county, that both churches, or certain churches, would be allowed to have up to so many vehicles, five vehicles, I believe, parked, along with this parking structure that's over off Kincaid, and I believe it's Third or First Street. I'm not exactly sure, but I know it's adjacent to the Public Defender's Office building. As of, I believe it was in November, the, I believe it was November the 8th, we received notification on our windshields that we had until the following Monday to remove any and all vehicles or property other than, or else they would be towed at our own expense. We removed the vehicles to the street, and we've had multiple police officers, along with some advocates, tell us that it is, it's the county that pushed us out of the parking structure, that it was the city stating that if there was anything that they would do for us, you know, if the parking lot was under city control, henceforth, there would not be an issue. I actually met with the county commission last week and found out that that's actually not the truth, that it's actually, yes, the parking lot is county, but because it is in city limits, the city council members were the ones, the driving force behind, enforcing that code to push the county people to, you know, vacate those who lived in vehicles inside parking lot. I don't know if the members here or if the community here are aware of it. There's probably 400, 450 homeless people in Mount Vernon, Burlington. There's one place that has shelters for homeless. It is Church of Latter Day Saints. It's a cold-weather shelter. It's open from 6:00 a.m. or 6:00 p.m. until 6:00 a.m. They close on March the 25th. The maximum capacity on that is 24 allowed there. That's to encompass three staff members. That's 21 people that are homeless, truly, truly homeless, that go there. You know, they, they'd literally be on the sidewalks downtown if they didn't go there. I have a vehicle. So if I was to give up my spot, because I had a permanent to go to the shelter for someone who was less privy than I, that a shelter in the cold weather. There's approximately, I think, anywhere between eight to 10 vehicles that rotate, that rotate in and out that street off of Kincaid throughout the week, and there's an average of two to three people to those vehicles. To say there's 20 people right there. I'm the only person that's under the age of 55 that doesn't have health problems. If these people, myself included, are forced out of their homes because we're at chow hall and we come back and our vehicles are gone, you're going to have health problems, a lot more than what there are now. The 911 calls that have been stated on the newspaper and other articles, the alleged it's been tenfold in that area, I can assure you, I really wish I had the papers in front of me, the 911 calls that are in that area are not dispatched to us, the homeless people. The officers that show up there two to three times a day literally come up and ask us, do we need anything? Toiletries, you know, blankets, you know, hot water, anything to that effect. If we remove that totally as a city and as a neighbor, where are we going to go? The Friendship House is full. It's the only thing that holds men. The women's shelter's always full. I know it's a huge issue, huge issue, and a lot of people really, really don't grasp the fact that the homeless, that are truly homeless, not couch surfing, not staying on your mom and your dad's downstairs basement, you're 400, 500 people that I've met in the last two months. Where are they going to end up going? A lot of those crash at night in our vehicles because they, you know, 24-hour shelters aren't available here. I don't know what a solution is. I just know that the problem's going to get worse. I mean, we police ourselves, for the most part. I mean, we're all adults. But I keep hearing, even from the police officers and everything else, you know, well, the churches can hold up to however many they want, how many vehicles they want, five vehicles, 10 vehicles, whatever, it's up to the church. This isn't a spiritual or religious issue. This is your neighboring issue. This is your brother's keeper issue. If you turn your eye, a blind eye, to those that are in need, you know, God forbid that you're in need and that somebody turns their eye on you. With that, I say thank you, guys, and I look forward to some solutions on this. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments tonight? Okay, we'll move along then. Item C is council member comments. Any council member comments tonight? Okay. I forego in the air's report since we have so many agenda items on the list. Item E is our committee agenda request. Any committee agenda requests from council?
I would just reiterate the one that I made during the committee meeting about having a review of the master plan, the master plan for redevelopment and the shoreline master plan.
Absolutely. All right. There is no unfinished business, so under new business tonight, item A is the appointment to the Mount Vernon Arts Commission, and our Parks and Enrichment Director, Bill King, will present.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're really excited tonight to welcome a new member to the Arts Commission, Mr. Daniel Brooks, has an incredible background, over 50 years working in the arts. He has a master's in education and a bachelor of arts in artist's studio art, I believe it is. He's worked as a teacher, and a student, a creator, a performer, pretty much hit all of the areas in the arts that you could possibly do. So tonight, staff requests council approval for the appointment of Daniel Brooks to fill a recently vacated term scheduled to expire on December 31, 2020. And according with the City of Mount Vernon ordinance, Title II, Chapter 2.97, the Mount Vernon Public Arts Commission, commissioners will be appointed for a three-year term, and then commissioners may then be reappointed for additional three-year consecutive terms on a rotational basis. So the staff requests council approval, approve the appointment of Daniel Brooks to the Mount Vernon Arts Commission.
All right. Any questions for Bill on this particular item? Is there, wait, I need to take a vote.
I move out.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Gary and a second by Mark. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion, Gary. Thank you. Mr. Brooks is here this evening, so we'll go ahead and make it official. We're thrilled to have him.
I am sitting.
Aye.
Do you solemn this way?
Do you solemn this way?
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Mount Vernon Arts Commission Member.
Mount Vernon Arts Commission Member.
For the city of Mount Vernon.
For the city of Mount Vernon.
In and for the county of Skagit.
In and for the county of Skagit.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to law.
According to law.
For the best of my ability and understanding.
Again, thank you to Mr. Brooks for volunteering to serve. We appreciate that. Item B tonight is an open record public hearing regarding a CDBG or Community Development Block Grant funds for 2020, 2021 Action Plan. Peter Donovan is here to present. Peter?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Yes, each year, the City of Mount Vernon receives Community Development Block Grant funding, CDBG funding, for community development and affordable housing needs in the city of Mount Vernon. This is federal funding that comes from HUD, from the Housing and Urban Development, that is then passed through to the city and to local agencies who express needs that are consistent with the city's strategic plan for the CDBG funding. CDBG objectives include providing decent housing, creating suitable living environments, and expanding economic activities, opportunities. HUD determines the amount of funding each year. In 2018, the City of Mount Vernon received and distributed about $400,000. Last year, it was about $390,000, and we just found out that this year, the amount of CDBG funding for the city of Mount Vernon will be about $383,000. Tonight, we will open up time for public comment on housing and non-housing community needs in the city as we begin the process of drafting our 2020, 2021 Annual Action Plan. The action plan that's drafted will take into account all of the needs that are expressed tonight, as well as needs that are submitted in writing to the mayor's office, and our annual action plan, once drafted, will be brought back to council likely in April for further public comment before finalizing the draft and submitting it to HUD for funding. This CDBG process is a great way for our local community to weigh in and to determine how federal funding can be used most effectively here in our own city. So with that, staff is recommending that Mayor and Council hold an open record public hearing tonight to obtain the views of interested parties on the community development needs of the city.
Any questions for Peter before we open? All right, great, thank you. With that, we'll open the open record public hearing regarding CDBG 2020 to 2021 Action Plan, knowing that several of you are here to speak tonight. I'll just remind you, if you would step to the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to around three minutes or so, and you're welcome. Who would you like to start? All right, come on in.
Good evening. Melissa South, Mount Vernon. I want to thank you, Mayor Boudreau, and council members for allowing me to speak on behalf of Community Action of Skagit County. I shared with you a letter with our intent to apply for the CDBG funds. Funding received will support the services we provide through our Resource Center, which includes the main point of entry for services for those facing homelessness in our community, Housing Resource Center. Last year, we had over 4,100 people came to our Resource Center in search of basic needs such as housing, food, basic hygiene needs, warm clothing, or simply someone to talk to that can help them identify solutions to their situation. Of those we saw, 38% resided in, or if homeless, reported that they last resided in Mount Vernon. The Resource Center, as with all of our programs, partnered with many other agencies in our neighborhood, the Salvation Army, Skagit Transit, Skagit Valley Herald Christmas Fund, many of the local, went to the local faith community, and other homeless service providers. We know we can't do it alone. It takes all of us together to come together to make a difference in our, in the enormous and often overwhelming issues that the people in our community face every day. Again, thank you for considering our partnership with the city of Mount Vernon.
Thank you, Melissa. All right.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Pugh, and I'm here representing Skagit Habitat for Humanity, and we would, going through the CDBG funding and what the requirements are and their objectives, we wanted to let you know that funds that would be used if they were, Habitat was part of the funding, would be to purchase land or use it for infrastructure costs as well as building materials. As you all know, building homes has been very costly due to all three of the above. And so for us, I wanted to let you know with our history, we have a proven model, successful model, of homeownership, and it's, our biggest proven model is stability, financial stability, but as well as it provides stability when homeowners enter the homeownership program. We give them education along the way, and they become a part of the community through our volunteer programs, and we've found that after they're in the home, they actually become volunteers within the community as well. So there's a lot of economics, economics related to it that relate to, I can tell you stories about some of our homeowners that were homeless at the time and now have been in their homes and are stabilized, as well as the children stabilized in high school and have now gone on to become college-educated and are giving back to the community. When you provide stable housing, what ours is at the end of allowing people to then now not have to use public funds for food stamps and subsidized rents and that type. So our homeownership actually provides that stability where they then do not need the funds, and so those funds can go to other families that are in need of those funds. And all of the objectives of providing long-term, secure housing is what our program is all about, and we really appreciate you allowing us to be here and to be a part of the funding for the next round of funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Tina Tate, Cedar Willie, Washington. Thank you so much for listening to my story today. What we do at Friendship House, I'm the executive director of Friendship House, I forgot to say that, is we have a couple of homeless shelters, but we discovered a couple of years ago a model of housing, permanent housing, for people who are on Social Security and Disability Insurance. So people like the gentleman that was just speaking earlier or talking, is talking about, we are able to take people from our shelters and put them in permanent housing in a shared living model, and this is a model that for two years has worked very, very well, and we really want to expand that model. We feel like we're seeing a lot more elderly and disabled people that are becoming homeless that have issues other than drugs. This is a clean and sober living, and we're able to provide them with permanent housing for a very low rent, and everything is provided for them, their utilities, their household supplies, everything they need to live. So they pay $450 a month, and they have everything they need so they can, we have one guy that makes $750 a month. Just imagine if he had to pay rent, if he could find anything for $750 a month and have nothing left for food, medication, clothing, toiletries, household supplies, electricity, all of the things that someone needs to live are provided. So it's an excellent model, and we're hoping that we can use the CDBG funding to further that model and purchase another home to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm Melanie Corey from the Housing Authority of Skagit County, and as you may be aware, we have three affordable housing complexes in your jurisdiction, and we recognize the work that you're doing to provide quality of life for Mount Vernon residents, which includes affordable housing, the economic opportunities, et cetera, the things that you focus on with CDBG. As was expressed eloquently by a Mount Vernon resident, Mount Vernon residents are struggling with finding affordable housing, as you know, because of the vacancy crunch that we have as well as the extremely high rents that are happening. And obviously, CDBG funds are very pertinent for what you're trying to do in the city. We appreciate all the work that you're doing. The Housing Authority partners with the city of Mount Vernon in addressing some of these needs related to your consolidated plan and action plan, and I just wanted to highlight those. The first one being one of your goals for maintaining the existing supply of affordable housing. We have a weatherization program that, through which we weatherize and repair homes for low-income individuals and families, particularly seniors and families with kids, and that keeps.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. I'm Melanie Corey from the Housing Authority of Skagit County. And as you may be aware, we have three affordable housing complexes in your jurisdiction. And we recognize the work that you're doing to provide quality of life for Mount Vernon residents, which includes affordable housing, the economic opportunities, et cetera, the things that you focus on with CDBG. As was expressed eloquently by a Mount Vernon resident, Mount Vernon residents are struggling with finding affordable housing, as you know, because of the vacancy crunch that we have, as well as the extremely high rents that are happening. And obviously, CDBG funds are very pertinent for what you're trying to do in the city. We appreciate all the work that you're doing. The Housing Authority partners with the City of Mount Vernon in addressing some of these needs related to your Consolidated Plan and Action Plan, and I just wanted to highlight those. The first one being, one of your goals for maintaining the existing supply of affordable housing. We have a weatherization program that, through which we weatherize and repair homes for low-income individuals and families, particularly seniors and families with kids. And that keeps those, those units from going offline, so that's one of the ways that we meet that goal. This past year, we weatherized and repaired 38 units, and about half of those were in the City of Mount Vernon. The other goal that we partner with you is on, is increasing the supply of affordable rental homes. And I wanted to let you know that we're on track for receiving funding for our new project in the city, and that will be for 51 units of affordable housing, serving families and individuals at 30% AMI and 50% AMI, so extremely low income and low income. And I wanted to pass on the exciting news that we were able to set aside eight units for chronically homeless with supports. And so that will help a small portion, but we're very excited about that. I wanted to thank you and applaud the city's efforts, the Mayor, the Council, and the staff in addressing in recent years some of the barriers to housing development, particularly related to density. So we appreciate those efforts, recognize those efforts. And then related to your action plan, just, I just encourage those goals of maintaining and increasing affordable housing. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council People and Staff. My name's Jody Dean, and I would like to quickly share with you that we're here again, Home Trust of Skagit, to ask for additional help for current home buyers that are in the pipeline right now in Mount Vernon waiting to purchase a home. But there's a barrier, and it's that down payment funding that we need. And I've talked to staff about it. I've talked to one of your consultants about it. I have a board member that sits on your council. I'd like to acknowledge Mary Hudson. And I also have a president of our Board of Home Trust, Lynn, here in the back. But we are here again to ask for down payment assistance. It's worked in the past. The City of Mount Vernon has funded seven homes in Mount Vernon in the last five years, so that's taking seven renters, which are families, which are kids, pulling them out of that rotation of renting and putting them into a permanent housing. Once that home is funded by not only the City of Mount Vernon, Home Trust, the county, the Housing Trust Fund out of Olympia, which is federal funds, it locks that home into permanency. It doesn't go back out on the market. So it's not the first home buyer that buys the home, but it's actually every seven years in Community Land Trust, homes are sold to the next person waiting in line to put their family in a home. So I won't go into all the deep numbers, but you need to know that you've funded four families in the City of Mount Vernon in the past five years. There's three families right now in our pipeline waiting for additional funding. They're mortgaged at the bank, they're ready to go. We have Housing Trust Fund money to go, we have Home Trust money to go, but we need one more layer of down payment to lock those families into homes. I'll just give you a brief. It's an employee at the hospital with the family, and I wish I could say the name of the other person, but it's a person with a single mom, two kids, that, in her profession, she helps homeless kids get off the street. So, and then there's a third family that's waiting as well. So any help you can give us, we will absolutely take it. And I do want to acknowledge, our Board of Directors is very thankful for your help in the past. And I'll leave you with this. I just came, it's Ash Wednesday. Right? So maybe I was brainwashed, but it gives us an opportunity to set our intention and look for a better tomorrow. And it's not just Home Trust responsibility or all the other people in this room, it's everybody together. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teresa. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Boudreau, and members of the Council, and the public, and staff. I'm Lynn Christofferson. I'm here representing Community Action also, and I actually reside in Bellingham, so I'm sorry I left the valley, but it's a great place to work. I'm going to kind of stick to my script because I'm actually here representing a capital request, and Bill was not able to be here tonight, so I just want to make sure that I hit some of his points. And we're still in discussion about what would be appropriate, and we obviously would work with staff and Council recommendations. But there are two areas that we're currently looking at within our organization that are stress points. We'd want to address some critical infrastructure needs at our main service center in Mount Vernon. We serve one in five Skagit County residents there, and this is a substantial amount of which are Mount Vernon residents. And this includes our Resource Center that Melissa mentioned earlier, which is our county's designated point of entry for homeless people. We're in the midst of a major remodel, some of you may know that. We're all squished into one part of the building so that we can improve the way that we serve our customers, particularly around a more respectful space, a more confidential space, and a safer space for children so that they're not re-traumatized by having to listen to the stories that their parents are sharing with us. We, one of our challenges is that our funding constraints for this project did not allow us to address some key infrastructure needs of the facility, such as drainage and entrance and egress. So we feel that we are responsible and liable to serving the community and ensuring the safety of people who are coming for those services, regardless of the weather. Both our clients and our staff have been impacted and in fact even injured in the past because of issues related to our infrastructure needs. And there's really no identifiable source of facility infrastructure funding. It's much more difficult to raise that privately. So we're happy to work with staff to identify and propose the most appropriate and cost-effective use of CDBG to address these issues. As you've heard tonight, there is a critical shortage of housing. It's no surprise, we talk about it a lot. And so we've actually decided to get involved in some housing development ourselves. So we are, well, for one, I just want to say, we fully endorse all the amazing people here, that because it does take a village to do the work that we're doing, and it's amazing, the widespread of services that are being proposed tonight. We really support the investment in quality, affordable, and multifamily housing development, whether through our organization or the many other partner organizations that have come tonight. So one of the things that we are wondering about is the potential for investing some CDBG funding in project planning. Affordable housing projects take an enormous amount of upfront time and upfront capital before they really become shovel-ready. Nonprofit housing developers can be especially challenged in their ability to cover these initial costs for pre-development and planning. And in turn, this can substantially hamper the range and pace of affordable housing development to address our local housing crisis. So upfront investment, however, could quicken the pace substantially. So we look forward to discussing with staff whether this is an appropriate time and use of these funds. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Lynn. Let me people look around, I think there's one more.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Members. I'm TJ Larick. I've been a resident of Mount Vernon for over 20 years, but also, besides being a resident, I'm here as the Habitat for Humanity's Resource Development Coordinator. Since I have been living in Mount Vernon, Skagit County, the county has grown 80% in the last 30-some years, and the sales taxes have grown. And even though we are in the best unemployment rate in the last 50 years, we still have, according to HUD, one-third of our households are spending more than 36% for their income for housing. I'd like to first thank the forwardness of the Council and the Mayor for the last couple of years where they've been addressing zoning and impact fees and setbacks and lot sizes. I applaud that because it makes it much easier for building and housing. What I'd like to do is have Habitat be thought of for the grants, addressing the barriers that you mentioned in November, December's, last year's meetings on affordable housing. Right now, Habitat has built 37 homes. We have zero people that have ever been repoed. We have a history of building. We also, our average mortgage with all the fees and everything is $950, which is less than the average rental in the area right now. And according to your six areas of focus that you have, Habitat, if we collaborate with the other agencies, can help in four of those six areas that you have set are your priorities. And so we'd like to be part of that because, me as an individual in the community, I prefer stability, which helps with the tax base, and it makes our community more of a permanent community than a mobile community. Yes, rentals and multi-duplexes are great, but it doesn't always by itself fix the idea of affordable housing. So I hope you consider us for your grant. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll go ahead and close the open record public hearing regarding CDBG funding. Again, there's lots of work to still be done on this. Peter, do you have anything else to say before we move along?
No, that's it. Other than thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. Appreciate you coming.
Any other questions for Peter on that particular?
I would just ask, is there a window of time that the applications that are available be submitted to the city? And have we received applications at this point?
So we haven't received any, any applications. We consider all of these to be applications and would ask all of those who spoke, those organizations, to go ahead and submit a letter similar to what they provided for us tonight, just to sort of summarize those things. And that would serve as their, their application. For a timeline, we're looking at mid-March to mid-April that we would have the draft action plan out for the public and open to public comment. It would be April 8th at the council meeting that we would invite the public to come and comment on that draft action plan. And then following that, it would be probably mid-March that we would bring back that final one for approval and move forward from there.
Mid-May.
Mid-May. Did I say March?
Yeah.
I meant May, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
All right, thanks, Peter. Moving on, item C tonight is our Northwest Clean Air Agency update. Peter's going to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, the Northwest Clean Air Agency states that they are here to preserve, protect, and enhance our air quality for the benefit of current and future generations in Island, Skagit, and Watcom Counties by fostering individual responsibility and assuring regulatory accountability. The agency is actually located right here in Mount Vernon, you probably knew that, on South Second Street. They are governed by a Board of Directors, and I learned recently that Council Member Mary Hudson is on that board. Is this the second one you've been referencing?
I know, I know. This is my night.
I hope you get some nights off.
She's a busy lady.
As well. They're also led by their Executive Director, Mr. Mark Buford, who's here tonight to brief Council on the latest from Northwest Clean Air Agency. Mark?
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the Council and staff. Thank you, members of the public, for inviting me here tonight. Again, my name is Mark Buford. I'm the Executive Director of the Northwest Clean Air Agency, and I'd like to spend a little time with you tonight, telling you a little about who we are and what we do in your community. In short, we're the government agency that protects air quality in Watcom, Skagit, and Island Counties. And we have been doing so for over 50 years. We actually came into existence before the Environmental Protection Agency, before the State Department of Ecology. We are an independent government. We are not a state agency. We are a multi-county, local clean air authority authorized under the State Clean Air Act. And Mount Vernon has a special place in our heart because, like was mentioned, we've been, our office has been in Mount Vernon ever since we were created in 67. And we've had a member of the Mount Vernon City Council on our board for, lo, these many years, and currently, Council Member Hudson is serving, and we thank her for her time and input. Why a local clean air agency? Why is it a multi-county agency rather than EPA or the state? Well, if you go to the Federal Clean Air Act, just on the right smack on page one, third bullet down, it says that air pollution prevention is primarily the responsibility of the state and the local governments. Some states have decided they want to have locals, local clean air agencies, and then they delegate their authority down. Some states don't. There are about 114 local clean air agencies in the country. Washington has seven. There we are, in the upper part of the map there. About 90% of the population of Washington is in the jurisdiction of a local clean air agency rather than the jurisdiction of the state or the EPA. So what do we do? The, as a local clean air agency, we ask for and receive, we get delegated, the authority from the EPA and from the state. It all rolls down to us to implement the federal and state clean air acts. Little bits are kept back, but it's, in large part, we have the authority of EPA and the state. Which means that if it's an air quality issue you're having here in Mount Vernon or in Skagit County or Island County, we are the agency we go to rather than the EPA or the state. As part of implementing a law, we do probably the things you would imagine that a public health regulatory authority would do. We do enforce the clean air acts. We have a permit program which issues permits for stationary sources of air pollution. We don't have authority over mobile sources, cars, trucks, boats. That's not us. We are industrial, institutional sources of air pollution businesses in short, in short form. We provide resources and outreach and education to the community, and we measure and monitor air quality. Any one of those, I could go for the rest of the night talking about them, but I won't. And I picked one to talk about, which is measuring air quality, because it's often a question that we get, is our air quality good? Yes, yes, our air quality here is the envy of the country. More so before the wildfires, I must say, and yet still, good air quality. How do we know? Well, we have monitoring sites throughout the county. We have eight in our jurisdiction. There's three in Skagit County, including one in our building in Mount Vernon. We also have one that's not on the map here that we just fired up last summer for the first time out in concrete, that's going to be used in the summers during wildfire season. So we have four in Skagit County monitoring stations and one right there in Mount Vernon. And you can see the results of that, updated every hour on our website, which is NWCleanAirWAB.gov. And you can scroll down from this page, and you'll see a lot more detail about what we're reading. But as I say, generally, the air quality is excellent, which is, is not true during wildfires. I would say our kind of go-to concern now on air quality is the wildfires that are largely happening in B.C. and come down this direction, as I'm sure you're aware. This is the map of air quality, or the graph of air quality measured in Mount Vernon for the year 2018. And in a typical year, and in 2019, that graph stayed in the green for the entire year, which means that air quality cannot be better. It is not a health concern when it is in that green zone at the bottom. Moderate is the yellow zone, and that's okay. It could be better, but it's okay. And when you go to the orange, that's where it starts to be a problem, a legal issue, where our agency has to react and come up with a plan. And it's a health issue, because that is the area where sensitive populations start to feel the impacts of air quality. Sensitive populations, it sounds like it might be a small group, but actually includes a lot of us. It includes younger people, older people, pregnant people, people with compromised respiratory systems. So it's meaningful when a 24-hour average stays up there in that orange zone. Now, I have to say, it does not compare to what happens in eastern Washington, where it goes up several ranges higher than that. So it, it's meaningful when a 24-hour average stays up there in that orange zone. Now, I have to say, it does not compare to what happens in eastern Washington, where it goes up several ranges higher than that. And it's can stay for a week or two. It is really catastrophic, air quality. But this is still, it's, you can just look at the graph and see, this, this is not what we're used to. This is different. You probably experienced it on your own, and you can see it on our graph here. And I will, I wanted to stay brief. So I'll, I'll close with a reflection on the Clean Air Act itself, which is, by many accounts, the most successful statute ever. And this is not just environmental statutes. It's been modeled the world over. It's achieved just huge public health benefits while the economy has grown at the same time, because it does it considering cost effectiveness at the same time. Hundreds of thousands of cases of asthma have been averted. Hundreds of thousands of premature deaths have been averted. And it, it is just a privilege to be able to implement an act that achieves public health goals like that. It's, it's great. And I will stop there.
Questions for Mark?
I got one.
Go ahead, Gary.
Um, I'm a barber, so I'm also doing this.
I know, I recognized you.
I'll cut my hair. And on the side, you know, doing the city council thing.
Yeah.
It just seems like to me that there's so much, much misinformation. And, you know, people will say, the refineries are the number one polluter in our county. Then it, then people say, it's I-5. Others will say, it's the coal trains. And then, some people say, it's wood burning stoves. What, which, what is it? I know there's obviously different levels. What would you say the number one polluter in our county is? If you had to kind of rank them a little bit?
It kind of depends on where you are. Because if you're in your house, and your neighbor is burning unseasoned wood that they have been keeping out on their driveway, and it's January, and it's been rained on for three months, and they have an uncertified wood stove, that will eclipse anything you could ever experience from an oil refinery that's five miles away. So it kind of depends. Numerically, the refineries, as you would suspect, have more pollution than other stationary sources. We know that I-5 is a source of air pollution, as it is in, in every major thoroughfare everywhere. It's, it's not really different from here than it is in other places. And it dissipates really quickly as you, as you move away from the highway. I would say in a matter of 50 meters or so, it really, really declines dramatically as you move away from the roadway. The answer to your question is, it depends on where you are. My job is, no matter where you are, that it's not impacting your health. And so I do that there in my agency, and certainly with the help of our board of directors, does that through regulatory means, through public education means, and resources for people that need resources.
So we can breathe easy?
You can. You can.
Mark, could you briefly talk about how you're funded? I think that's interesting.
I can, I can. In fact, I have a slide on that. I was anticipating that question. We have about a $4 million annual budget. We're on a fiscal year of July 1st through June 30th. We are primarily a fee-for-service agency. It wasn't envisioned this way in the Clean Air Act. I would say it was envisioned in the Federal Clean Air Act that federal funds would supply 65% to 75% of all the clean air agencies' funding needs. And it just doesn't happen. It's, it's much, much, much smaller than that. So you'll see there that, I think the number's 84% is fee-for-service. That's permit fees, annual fees. Basically, if, the, the theory being that if you're causing air pollution, that you have a responsibility to support the agency that's required to make sure that public health isn't impacted. We have grants from state and from the EPA. That's another 8%. 4% is a per capita, which is authorized under the Clean Air Act of Washington. It is a, the closest thing as you would think to like a tax, I guess. It's 35 cents per person, per year. It's assessed to the county and to cities and towns in our jurisdiction. So Mount Vernon is assessed and does pay. Thank you very much. About $35,000 a year, round number. Our per capita of 35 cents per person has been unchanged for 30 years. It is the lowest of all of the local clean air agencies in Washington.
Questions on the side?
I just want to say that it's a fascinating board to sit on. I learn something every time I'm there.
Well, thank you.
So, Mark, if any of our residents listening have any concerns or want to report something, do they just call the agency directly?
You call the agency directly, yes.
Okay. All right. Great. All right. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Explaining what you do. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Moving on then. So item D tonight is the approval of an agreement, the Skagit County Tourism Promotion Area. And Peter Donovan will present the item in a sec.
Thanks again, Mayor. Council, on December 11th, you heard from Andy Mayer and Peter Browning, the Mount Vernon and Burlington Chamber of Commerce CEOs, about a renewed effort to bring the county government and local city governments together to form a tourism promotion area, TPA. The tourism promotion area would create a revenue mechanism generated by local lodging properties that would benefit the area by promoting tourism and commerce. It would also provide access services to, for visitors. Mr. Mayer and Mr. Browning have worked collaboratively with the cities and with the county, and they've shepherded this process to where it stands today, which is this inter-local agreement between Skagit County and each of the cities and towns. This agreement identifies the purposes of the tourism promotion area. It also sets forth the party's agreements with respect to its operation and establishment. The agreement's been reviewed and approved by the city attorney's office, and tonight's staff is recommending that council authorize the mayor to enter into an inter-local cooperative agreement to form the Skagit County Tourism Promotion Area.
Okay. Any questions for Peter on this particular item?
No, this is something that we've worked on in the past. A few years ago, it died off, and it's kind of refreshing to see it come back. So I would move that the council authorize the mayor to enter into the inter-local agreement with Skagit County to form the TPA.
Second. Motion by Mark and a second by Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Special thanks to Kevin, our city attorney, for helping work on that particular agreement that came back around for, I think it's like the third time. Appreciate that. And also Andy Mayer and Peter Browning for helping shepherd that through. All right. Item E tonight is an approval of an agreement with the Economic Development Alliance of Skagit County. And our finance director, Doug Valeski, is here to present. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff recommends that council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Economic Development Alliance of Skagit County for the calendar year of 2020. Each year, the city of Mount Vernon budgets for and provides funding to the Economic Development Alliance for Skagit County. The city does not have the expertise or the resources to adequately promote economic development, and this nonprofit organization was formed for the express purpose of promoting and attracting new business, businesses, expanding existing business, and enhancing trade opportunities for all of Skagit County. The city receives significant benefit from the development and expansion of the local economic base by enhancing employment opportunities for its residents and by creating additional tax revenues. The city has committed $10,000 of financial support to the Economic Development Alliance for this agreement for 2020, which was included in the adopted 2020 budget. An agreement between our two agencies needs to be approved to confirm the city's funding commitment. So staff recommends council authorize the mayor to enter into this agreement.
All right. Any questions for Doug on this particular item?
I'd move to, moving to the agreement between the Economic Development Alliance of Skagit County and the city of Mount Vernon.
Second.
Motion by Gary, second by Mark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Item F tonight is a sole-source purchase. I'm not flagent, I'm gonna say that.
Flight.
An Influent pump. And our city engineer, Bill Bullock, is here to present. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. City councilman. Yeah, that's pronounced "flight." I screwed it up several times before Gary got tired correcting me.
All right.
So this is for sole-source purchase for a particular brand of Influent pump, basically sewage pump for the sewer treatment plant. And so as part of that, I want to take a, kind of a brief moment to, to describe to you about the whole process of sole-source purchasing, because it is different than going out to bid. And so what this takes, there's some exceptions to the bidding law. And part of this, I'm gonna read to you some excerpts from the city bid book, which is a resource we give from MSRC to kind of give us guidance with this. But there's five basic circumstances where, where bid law allows us to waive those things. Part, cities are not required to advertise for bids when the desired product is clearly and legitimately limited to a single source of supply, which applies to this particular situation. And cities may not be required to seek bids if there are special facilities, which is what the treatment plan is, and special market conditions. So special market conditions are like if you're buying something at an auction or something, it's giving you time to go to bid. Special facilities being is that a treatment plant has some special conditions to it that these pumps uniquely meet that are required to do. And I'll kind of explain that a little bit later. Then the other ones are bids aren't necessary during an event of an emergency. And then, I don't know a lot about the pollution control facilities piece, but there's some neighborhood self-help projects that don't require you to go to bid. And those are commonly like, for instance, if you have a playground that's going to be constructed by volunteers and service organizations, you can do that with those types of people rather than hiring a contractor. And then the other one is that cities can hire counties for road projects. So most often, like counties do chip seal and things like that. And you can partner with them, like say, in paving contracts and things like that, rather than go out to a bid to a general contractor. So part of establishing a single source of supply also takes kind of four basic litmus tests. A city department has conducted a screening process whereby it can justify the purchase of a specific product, which is part of what we're doing. And then it can also indraft legitimate specifications to which only one vendor can successfully respond. I'll explain that a little bit. The memo explains that in our findings, basically. And then also, the product is available only through one manufacturer or distributor, and the manufacturer's sole, the manufacturer's sole certifies. So we have that on attachment three. And then also, the vendor also certifies that the city is getting the lowest price it offers anyone else. And what that is meant to do is, that's kind of the equivalent of a little bid. So that way, they're offering us the same price they offer everybody else. So as part of our findings for these pumps, we have, I basically have five reasons listed in the council memo. And part of that is, one, the consistency of maintenance requirements and in-house knowledge of the equipment. Our personnel are familiar with these pumps. They know how to maintain them if things go wrong with them. And the other portion of that is a consistency, I'll slow down, sorry, of spare parts and tools and any special equipment they may need to maintain these pumps over time. And right now, we have proven reliability from this particular pump manufacturer as well, because we use these pumps within our city. And in particular, these pumps, if Gary needs to step on you, well, but they have like an anti-clogging impeller. So it's a special impeller that operates in a way that prevents a majority of the clogging from debris and other things that pumps may encounter. And that's real important, because you don't want them to fail suddenly and catastrophically. And our Influent pumps are the heart of our treatment plant. If those things aren't solid, our treatment plant doesn't run at all. So that's why these are so important. And part of it is, is our existing pumps we have in that treatment plant, I think were installed in '88. So they're on about a 30 years into their life cycle, and are approaching the end of their life cycle. And so what we want to do is, these pumps are a long lead item. They take, I think, about 10, 12 weeks, yeah, to, from order to manufacture to delivery. So having these on the shelf, so as we can replace them as they come to that end of that life cycle, which is in the near future, is what's of interest to us here. And the other thing that's really kind of interesting is these things have integrated explosion-proof motors. So most of the things on our treatment plant are explosion-proof, have been proofed from explosion in some way. These pumps, rather than having to have an auxiliary item added to them to do that, these have all that integrated into them. So for those reasons, that's why we're interested in purchasing these pumps and why they qualify as a sole source. And they are also, this company also sole sources these pumps to Birchberry, Ferndale, and, sorry, Birch Base Sewer and Water, Ferndale and Linden. So we're not the only jurisdiction that uses them as a sole source for this particular product. And so, if there's any questions?
All right. Any questions for Bill on this particular?
Entertain anything like that.
Sounds like a long explanation of telling the council, if we don't buy these pumps, we could end up with sewer backed up in our house.
A lot faster than you'll fill a six-gallon dumpster with. Six-gallon dumpster, yes, yeah.
I would remove the resolution, 974.
All right. Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Richard? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, council, for saving us from sewer backups. All right. Item G tonight is the approval of an inter-local agreement and right-of-way easement for Third and Kincaid Street U-turn. Chris Phillips, our development services director is here. Chris?
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Actually, for the next 11 items.
I know.
I'll be here with you. Vegas has put the over-under at 30 minutes. So the real good news is, everything that I'm presenting you, oops.
There you go.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Everything that I'm presenting you tonight has already been previously briefed to you a variety of times or is contained within our, our budget book. In this particular case, the city has been working, well, as part of this multimillion-dollar Viscanti development that's located on Kincaid, Washington State Department of Transportation has required Viscanti to put in a U-turn at Third and Kincaid. Sounds easy enough, but it's been, as Kevin was talking about, the idea of a public-private partnership. This has been six to eight months' worth of a labor of love between myself, the city attorney, Alan Danforth, our engineering manager in development services, Ken Hanson, who is the facilities manager for the county, the county attorney. And then you flip that over to the Viscanti side of the house. And quite frankly, all we are doing is a pass-through. So in this particular case, the land that is highlighted in this area right here shaded is the property that we're talking about. It has a value of about $5,700. Viscanti will be paying the $5,700 plus our attorney's fees and our staff's fees that will be incorporated into their right-of-way permit. So all fees will be captured within that. And basically, it is a pass-through of funding that the inter-local agreement, that if the council approves the mayor to, authorize the mayor to enter into, into the agreement, we'll, we'll take care of that first. The county will be taking it to their commissioners on March 4th. And then, once they have signed, or we've signed it, they've signed it, then we'll be sending the documents to Viscanti for them to sign, and then we're done. So basically, what I have before you is an inter-local agreement, a right-of-way agreement, the one with the county, one with Viscanti, and then the terminology there as far as the pass-through of funds. And I'm just looking to seek your approval for the mayor to enter into agreement, or authorize the mayor to enter into these agreements, pending any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Chris on this particular item?
So this is all a transfer of public property, not any private property being involved in that.
Kevin is there? Need to do two different actions?
The council can approve both the terms.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the council authorize the mayor to enter into these agreements.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Melissa. Look at the second to Mary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item, don't give me a bright hair. Okay. Okay. Item H tonight is the approval of an agreement for building inspection professional services. And again, Chris is here. Great.
Thanks, Mayor. What the city staff is recommending is contracted inspection services is required to meet the unprecedented level of new building construction, tenant improvements, and other life safety inspections. City staff will provide a quarterly update on the numbers of inspections and if a budget amendment would be required for this particular contract. The contract that we have is with materials testing consulting. It's not to exceed $40,000. It's contained within our current budget. And this is, again, what we have briefed last year when we were going through the process. This is just putting those things in action. So an RFP went out. We had four different companies that had applied for the, or applied for this particular contract. We went through a vetting process, and we ended up selecting Materials Testing and Consulting Incorporated to facilitate these particular contracted services.
All right. Any questions for Chris on this?
Just one question. So this is basically fee-for-services, so as we utilize them, we're, okay, so it's not just flat $40,000, we don't use it?
Okay. So the, it's in, it's on page 75, basically, of the book. So what we do with these and the other ones that you'll be seeing before you, there's a price set that's in there, and it's basically, some of the services can be remitted back to us, for instance, for biologist services or for arborist services. Other services were contracted out, because we just don't have the ability to do this. In this particular case, with the building, it's just such a huge volume of inspections that are going on. This will allow our team to go and train with a variety of conferences. And when we get into the busy building season, which is coming up here in March, what we see, as I showed you last week with the number of permits we have coming in, we already have a business model planned out for that, that we should be able to meet that $40,000 goal that we've set. However, if we come in, and as I mentioned, that the ICC codes, especially the International Building Code compliance, is coming up for renewal, people are going to want to get their building permits prior to that new environmental regulations that are coming in here that will drive up costs. We just want to make sure, full disclosure, when I come in and talk with you, if there is extra funds, I'll be looking internal first before coming in for a budget amendment. But if we have to go over that 40K, I'll be coming back to you.
Any questions for Chris on this?
We move the council authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with MTC in the amount of not to exceed $40,000.
Second.
Motion by Mark and a second by Mary. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item I tonight is the approval of an agreement with Skagit surveyors and engineers. Chris, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So the remainder of these have been on-call services providers that we've had from 2008 and some even earlier than that. So these are just annual ones that we'll be looking at here. The Skagit survey and planning, this is Mary Ann Manville Ailes. She's worked with the city since 2008. This was part of the budget where you increase planning services for 90,000K, not, well, not to exceed, but this is for this particular contract here. So she provides all that plan permit review piece that allows Rebecca to go do other things that the council has directed her to do.
Any questions for Chris on this?
Go ahead.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion. Make a motion.
I move to approve the, I move to approve the agreement with Skagit surveyors.
All right.
Make a motion. Second.
All right. Motion by Mark and a second by Gary. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item J tonight is the approval of an agreement with Armadillo Design Lab. Chris?
Similar here with Armadillo Design Lab. We've partnered with them since 2016. They provide design review for a variety of projects that have been approved as planned unit developments for small lot plots, which average somewhere less than 7,500 feet for all multifamily projects. Many of these projects located in the historic downtown and surrounding areas. We make sure these comply with our recently approved downtown design standards and have been codified in that Mount Vernon Municipal Code 17.7. What we're seeking is your approval for us to continue that contract with them.
All right. Questions for Chris on this?
I'd move to approve the agreement with Armadillo Design Lab.
Second. Motion by Gary, second by Melissa. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item K is the approval of an agreement with 7K Environmental. Chris?
So 7K Environmental, the city has partnered with them since 2007, I'm sorry, 2012, but is part of the Managed Ecosystem Alternative Program, which was adopted in 2007. Basically, that's your critical area program that you have, and the wet bank, or wetland mitigation bank that you're talking about. And we utilize 7K services. Kate Knox Machada for that role. The city is requesting, or staff is requesting, the ability to go ahead and enter into professional services contract with them.
All right. Questions for Chris?
I move approval to enter into the agreement with 7K Environmental. Second.
Motion by Mary and a second by Richard. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item L tonight is approval of an agreement with Transportation Solutions.
Right. So TSI, thanks, Mayor. We've been partnering with them since 2007. So anytime any project would come in for a traffic study, parking study, these are the guys. So these are the professionals that we have worked with that keep our city transportation project or program up to speed as far as one of the seven COGS of the comp plan. So what I request, or what city staff requests is that you allow the city to enter into a professional services contract with TSI.
Questions for Chris?
I'll make a motion to ask the mayor to enter into this contract.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Melissa and a second by Gary. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item M is the approval of an agreement with LC Lee &amp; Associates Incorporated. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. The city has partnered with Dr. Lee again, who is a world-renowned biologist, travels the world, is used in a variety of different fashions for court cases, again, worldwide, which is, we're very pleased that Dr. Lee actually resides in Skagit County. So it's very nice for us. He provides our Managed Ecosystem Alternative Program, which was adopted back in 2007 as part of our critical area ordinance. And Dr. Lee is, would be our on-call biologist that's here on town. So if you think of any of the notice of violations for any wetland issues that we've had, Dr. Lee is our pro from Dover. He's got great contacts as it relates to the Department of Ecology as well as the Army Corps of Engineering. So he's been instrumental in making life very well for our particular staff and for our residents.
Okay. Questions for Chris on this?
I'd move the council authorize the mayor to enter into the professional services agreements with LC Lee &amp; Associates.
Second.
Motion by Mark and a second by Mary. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item N is the approval of an agreement with Olbricks &amp; Associates, P-L-L-C. Chris?
Thanks, Mayor. We've been utilizing Mr. Phil Olbricks as our hearing examiner. So for any of the planning, land use elements that need to go in front of a hearing examiner, this is where we use Phil for those services. He's been a wonderful addition to our team. We used him exclusively when I was a city administrator down in Mculteau for three years before coming up here. So city staff requests to allow the mayor to, or authorize the mayor to get in, or sign contract with Mr. Olbricks. I completely mangled that, Kevin. I know, I saw you shaking your head over there. I'm trying.
All right. Any questions for Chris on this?
I'd move for approval of the professional services contract with Olbricks &amp; Associates.
All right. Second. Motion by Mary, second by Melissa. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item O tonight is the approval of an agreement with Christian Carlson. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. So we utilize Mr. Christian Carlson's abilities as it relates to architectural review. He's been instrumental with assisting us with our downtown design standards, enforcing those downtown design standards, as well as other projects that relate to planned unit developments for small lot plots, approximately 7,500 feet, as well as multifamily projects. City staff is recommending that you allow the mayor to sign, or enter into contract with Mr. Carlson.
Any questions for Chris?
I'd make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with Christian Carlson.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Richard and a second by Mary. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item P is the approval of an agreement with Land Develop Engineering &amp; Survey.
Thank you, Mayor. The city has partnered with this organization since 2014, and this is actually where we were able to steal our engineering manager, Alan Danforth, who used to be a contractor for the city, from this particular company. What they do is, pretty much from the building inspection side of the house, they provide engineering services. So for instance, if John and Alan were unable to do any inspections, we would coordinate with them to come in. And if you think of all the utility work that needs to be done prior to a building or foundation being put in, these are the inspections that they do. So we're talking gas lines, streets, curb, sidewalks, ADA compliance, that's what they're used for. So city staff is recommending that you allow, authorize the mayor contract for these services.
Questions for Chris on this?
I'd move to approve the professional services with LDES.
Second.
Losing track here. Motion by Gary and a second by Richard. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item Q is the approval of an agreement with Urban Forestry, Jim Barberinas.
The final. All right. Thank you, Mayor. The city has partnered with Jim Barberinas since 2013, and he provides us contracted arborist services. So anytime that we're dealing with a variety of notice of violations, let's say hypothetically that we had, I don't know, a resident just chopped some trees down in an area to improve view, we would be using Mr. Barberinas to provide that. We also utilize Jim's services when it comes to any of the planned unit developments, and you're looking at a variety of different foliage trees that need to go in there. Jim is one that we utilize to ensure that we're doing things the right way. So he provides those arborist services for us. City staff is recommending you authorize the mayor to enter into contract with Mr. Barberinas for arborist services.
All right. Questions for Chris?
I'd move the council authorize the mayor to enter into the professional services agreement with Urban Forestry.
Second.
Motion by Mark and a second by Mary. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.